Donating to a pet's medical care can keep families together. Pets and people belong together. Learn more at petsandpeopletogether.org.
Oregon Community Access. Community is our middle name.
Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll call in Village of Oregon Village Board meeting to order of Monday, May 22, 2023. I would just like to take a moment to welcome you all to our new village hall. This represents hours and hours and hours by our staff, particularly Jeff and Kenny and Martin coordinating. And although the air conditioning is not quite up to speed tonight, maybe you noticed. But things with any new building, of course, there's bugs here and there, but we're all pleased to have you here. And after 80 years, I'm glad to say we have a new village hall. So we'll get through it. Item one, call to order. Item two, roll call.
Betsy?
Here.
Belo?
Here.
Manki?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Here. Item three, approval made, 2023 Village Board meeting minutes if correct and corrections and mistakes if any. Motion? Carlene? Amanda? All of the favoring, I say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. For eight, oath of office and swearing in for Oregon Police Department Officer Trevor Beerman and Alex Seichter?
Seichter.
Seichter. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for adding this to your agenda tonight. We're going to swear in both officers separately, just simplifies things. But before I talk to you about both of them swearing in, you know, this resonated through the academy presentation for graduation, the graduation ceremony, and I could not agree more that it's an understatement to say that it takes guts to want to come into this profession while it's being so heavily scrutinized and take on the risk, the possibility of not going home to your loved ones, but all because of that commitment and keeping your community safe. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate Trevor and Alex wanting to come and work for our community. The academy is a, hands down, a pass fail situation through and through the entire time, and at any point, students can fail out of the program and they lose everything. Both of these gentlemen had jobs, well-paying jobs, that they were fully dedicated to, but they wanted to both pursue their passion in becoming police officers and more specifically for the Village of Oregon. They went through the academy, they left everything behind and fully committed, gave blood, sweat, and tears, from what I hear, to their academy experience. And I know they really enjoyed it. I know they grew and learned a lot from it, and I couldn't be more proud of both of them for achieving that graduation status. So I'll explain to you first, the first one here. His name is Trevor Beerman. Trevor was born in Platteville, Wisconsin. He lived for a short time in Cassville, Wisconsin, and then he and his family eventually moved to Wiscon- Evansville, Wisconsin. He attended Evansville High School and eventually graduated from Kaiser University, where he achieved a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Prior to us hiring him, he was employed by, and I'll probably say it wrong, Elsivia as a fuel delivery associate. Trevor has also been a member of the Evansville Fire Department for four years. When, you know, one of the common questions we ask candidates as we interview them is why the Village of Oregon, why the Oregon Police Department? It was pretty clear in his answers. He is truly committed to community policing and it was an interesting twist to meeting Trevor is, of all people, it was my brother who works for the Evansville Fire Department as well, encouraged him to apply, which I am so glad he did. So I got to meet him and me and my staff strongly agree he'd be a great asset to our team. So with no further said, I will have Trevor Wyanshaw come up, meet me at the table here, and we'll get you sworn in. We have done this unofficially at this point, just to get them started with the academy, but we wanted to make sure he and his family experienced the true swearing-in process. So Trevor, I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Trevor R. Beerman, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Trevor R. Beerman, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn police officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of January 12, 2023. So the second individual I'd like to introduce you to is Alexander Seichter. Background on Alex is he was born in Russia, and at a young age, he was adopted by his parents who live in the United States. Alex graduated high school at Parkview High School in Orvigo, Wisconsin, and he has obtained an associate's degree at UW Rock County. He later went on to UW Platteville, where he graduated with his bachelor's degree. Prior to working for us, he worked for the Rock County Sheriff's Office as a correction officer for approximately one year. Alex was another interesting applicant. He said one of the many reasons he wanted to come work here was not only because the Oregon Police Department does a lot of community-oriented policing, but community programs, but as well as his mother is associated with a company we contract with, Healthy Minds, and Healthy Minds seems to like us. So that was really good to hear. So I think Alex will be an excellent addition as well. Alex, if you could step on him. I, Alexander J. Seichter.
I, Alexander J. Seichter.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of January 13, 2023.
I will assume my duties as of January 13, 2023.
Okay, moving on now. Without question, we're going to move up item 7A1 due to a time constraint from the presenters. And that would be, Ad Hoc Public Arts Committee proposal for, propose, I'm sorry. Thank you. Ad hoc Sustainability Committee, presentation of resolution 23-20 adopting sustainability goals, transitioning to carbon neutrality and 100% renewable energy by 2050. You're there.
Hi, yeah, thank you for moving us up. Andy had another commitment tonight, so we really, really appreciate that. My name is Teresa Nelson. I am the chair of the Ad hoc Sustainability Committee, and with me is?
Andy Wyland. I'm a member of the Sustainability Committee.
And so I'm sure you are aware that the Ad hoc Sustainability Committee has been working over the last year or so to put together a plan to reduce the negative impact, the village's negative impact on the environment and to increase resilience to climate change as directed by the Village Board. We do have a draft report out for public comment, and we are having a community input session next week, Wednesday. And a large part of that, that report and that plan is this carbon neutrality and the 100% renewable energy. I think we're all aware of that we are already realizing impacts of climate change. The climate has changed over the last 50, 100 years, and it will continue to do so unless we do something about that. We are likely to have warmer climate, a wetter climate, more increased intense rainfall events, and changes to our winter precipitation. And planning for these, you know, involving, evolving climate challenges will be crucial for communities to maintain vibrant economies, reduce health risks, and promote public safety. Part of this is related to the Paris Climate Agreement that was enacted in 2016, and the idea of that is to limit the global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. And really, we're looking at, you know, the peaks of emissions must come down from like around 2025. So we're approaching that point where we really need to be ratcheting things down. Otherwise, you know, we'll reach that tipping point where we're going to be experiencing more heat waves, droughts, increased rainfall, and really, our community needs to be part of that and do our part. Andy, I wonder if you would talk a little bit about the net neutrality and, or the net zero and renewable energy?
Sure. So just real briefly, the idea of net zero is to basically produce as much energy as we utilize in a year. The concept of Forest Edge Elementary School, which I was a part of, really signifies that, and I give you lots of credit for what you've done with the Oregon Library and building that facility with being geothermal and not using basically fuels that we have to burn. Moving away from those will be really essential in trying to hit these different points that we have to make to reduce the amount of CO2 that we're putting into the atmosphere. So that's, that's an awesome start. We also have some really good federal incentives out there, which have happened over the last year to help us all, not only from a municipal point of view, but also from a resident's point of view, start basically moving away from fuels that we have to burn and moving to more electrification in our facilities. And then as the grid continues to green, basically, we'll, we'll be taking advantage of that and reducing the amount of CO2 we put into the atmosphere.
So the report outlines several suggestions and recommendations for moving us towards these goals. And so you know, we are not alone. Our community is not alone in this sort of thing. Net zero resolutions have been passed by Madison, Manona, Green Bay, Milwaukee, Eau Claire, Middleton. All of these communities have decided to play their part in this solution to climate change, and we're asking you tonight to commit Oregon to do the same. Are there any questions on the resolution?
Yeah, I, first of all, want to say to the board that I'm very thankful for the work of the Sustainability Committee. I am appointed to that committee, and I've been able to sit with them through, through one meeting, and they've done so much work. I'm doing my best to catch up on all that they've done. I do have one question that is also a concern, is the final bid for the resolved would require all village expenses to come before the board for approval, from large public works projects down to ordering pens? And I am a little concerned that that's untenable for the Village Board to approve every expense.
I would say one of the things I've learned in working with boards is never to push somebody to do something that they're not ready to do. So I think from my perspective, this is an opportunity to share those concerns, and maybe we need to modify the, the resolution. This was just our first draft that we came up with, and we needed a lot of help actually to get to this point. Thank you, the village administrator, to help us with that. So I think that's, that's a fair concern.
So I read that a little differently, because it says, "All purchasing decisions that come before the board?"
Oh, sure.
"All purchasing decisions don't come before us." Is that correct? Like when you order certain things? I mean, we can certainly encourage buying products that are sourced sustainably when you're looking for them, when you're buying pens, for instance, as the example says, but those kinds of things don't come before us. Correct?
I'd say the vast majority of purchasing happens at? I'd say the vast majority of purchasing happens at the department level. So most of the financial process to go forward is through the budget, but the actual purchasing is happening at staff level for, for most things, I would say.
So then I wonder if maybe we want to add something in there that says that encourages, you know, purchases by departments to also look for sustainable whatever?
Amanda?
So I also had a question, same, same general section, but I love this idea, and I, I don't object to having cost benefit analysis and measurement of contribution in that, but my concern is just staff time, like who would prepare that? So if the Sustainability Committee is willing to help make this a reality by reviewing those purchases and offering suggestions or, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned about what it would take to make a cost benefit analysis for major purchases.
Well, we are an ad hoc committee, and we end at the end of July this year. Our report does have recommendations for continuing it because we see that the recommendations of the plan will not have anywhere to go unless there is something to support that, whether that's a permanent committee, additional staff, like a sustainability coordinator or something along those lines. But if, you know, if there's a lot of issues with that last paragraph, that we could take that back to our committee and say, you know, is this something that we want to keep in the resolution or if we want to modify it slightly?
I would say it was framed after other resolutions that are out there. So again, we needed a starting point in order to have this kind of conversation, so that's why we put it together. I'd also say it, you know, there's lots of ways to accomplish these things, and so we felt that it was important to have a goal, and a short-term goal and a long-term goal so that we can work toward these things over time.
You'll have to put the microphone down to Matt there, please. Thanks, Ali.
My concern with that paragraph is, I don't know what purchasing decision would include. Would that include public construction contracts or reconstructing streets? Would it include building a new senior center? Would it include? So I, that, I think could be a little more clear.
I would have to agree that, you know, there isn't another word in the resolution I disagree with, but I would have to agree with my fellow board members that I'm a little concerned about, you know, dump trucks versus pens, as was outlined. So perhaps we might suggest just asking your committee to work on a little more. I know your time, time is short, but maybe talk a little more with staff and maybe, maybe narrow the parameters a little bit, or, or come back to us and say, you know, you know, we want, we suggest these changes and we can proceed from there.
And I'll just say, thank you for the, the input. The, the meat of this resolution is, are the, the drawdown targets. You know, looking at drawdown of 50% by 2033, 75% by 2040, and 100% by 2050. That, that's, that's really the meat of this resolution. So I just want to make sure that that's something that you don't have concerns about or want us to look at further.
Yeah, the only thing that I have a concern about is just how, how that happened. So I agree that the final, the final clause here is the one that really kind of needs some reworking so that there's a little bit more definition about how that happens. I think the, the one and two there under the first now therefore are absolutely spot on.
Well, and I, I did mean to say, and I think I forgot, I'm completely on board with the spirit of this resolution, and so I, I think it is very important and something we should follow through on. I guess my, I question for you is, would you prefer time with the Sustainability Committee to rework the last paragraph, or would you prefer just to delete it and have it in front of the board without that paragraph? What, what's your preference?
We haven't had a chance to talk about that. We have an input session coming up where we've invited the community in. So I think having us have an opportunity to maybe talk to constituents in that way, getting some feedback there, as well as the feedback that you provided, I think would be a great chance for us to, and also work with staff to bring something back.
Just as a side note on these goals and objectives of this resolution, I too agree with what you have sitting here, for the most part, minor tweaks, but I think as this goes forward, the conversation about switching the sustainability from an ad hoc committee to a regular sitting committee needs, needs to be part of this, especially when they issue their final report, because the village is going to need help figuring out whether, how we quantify, whether or not we're hitting these goals, and what changes need to be made in the interim as well. So I don't think that this is a committee that we can just necessarily write though after this resolution is passed or not.
And we, we will be bringing the report to the Village Board in June, so know that that's coming. We hope to incorporate some of the comments that we receive from the community next, through our input session next week, and any comments that we get from staff. We did reach out to staff and asked them specifically to take a look at this as well and provide comments to us. So then that, that final report will come before the board in June.
So I think we've given you some direction, and I hope you're comfortable with that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Again, our community input session is next week, Wednesday, May 31st, at 6:30 to 8, right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 4B, concept plan review for multifamily family residential development located at 5227 County Highway CC submitted by Regency Property Management.
Thanks, Phil. I'll give a little, give a little intro and then hand it over to these guys. So just wanted to bring you all up to speed on a concept plan that we've seen at Planning Commission earlier this spring, and then also had a neighborhood meeting this last Tuesday in this room. This is a project proposed by Regency Property Management for a property that's for sale right now on County Highway CC. It's 5227 County Highway CC owned by the Epps currently. It's right across the street from Mulligan's, about three and a half acre parcel. And Regency has proposed a four-story, about 144-unit building consisting of apartments of multiple sizes, quite a bit of space for green area, stormwater, some underground parking. Regency has a long history, a family-owned company, a long history in the area, so I'll ask them to share a little bit more about that. But we will be, there are a couple of concept plans that have been shared, and thankfully, due to the size of the site, there's a lot of opportunity to kind of move things around. There's definitely some outstanding issues. I know the Planning Commission will want to discuss vehicle access, pedestrian access, you know, the height of the building and kind of matching the scale of surrounding properties. So a lot of things still to work through, but as this property is currently in the town of Oregon, this would be an annexation. So if this moves forward, you'll be seeing kind of the annexation ordinance and agreements and things later in the summer. So just wanted to catch you all up to speed on this before we got too far down the road on design, but I'll hand it over to you guys to just introduce yourselves and talk a little bit about where you are with the project design.
Sure. My name is Jake Dome. I am with Regency Property Management here for the development. Good to see you guys all again. This is actually our regional manager, Ian. He's sitting in with us today. He can help answer any questions that pertain to management or anything else. So yeah, like Ali said, we are a family-owned company and have been at it for about 45 years. So we are mostly based in the Madison area. We have a couple of properties in Verona, one in Portage, and wish to continue to develop, continue to develop in, in the greater Madison area. So we found this site, kind of, I ended up for a while. We think it'd be great for multifamily, and I think that we could build a great product there to contribute to Oregon. Understand kind of the dynamics of getting the annexation done, and we think we can definitely accomplish all of that if we have your guys' support. So we've come up with a few different conceptual plans. All of them are subject to change based upon feedback. We met once already with Planning Commission, and now had the neighborhood meeting as well. So we've gotten quite a bit of feedback in terms of what people like, what people don't like, so on and so forth. I think the main issue that we're dealing with right now, or potential issue, could be, is mostly this height of the building intensity of the apartments. I think that we're open to doing, you know, any form of modifications to the building to suit whatever, you know, we look for aesthetics and whatnot. So we think that this would be a great site for the building, and we're open to, or we're open to any feedback that you guys have for us.
I will just note one thing, I just realized that the identical concept plans ended up in the packet. There was meant to be another version. It was essentially just flipped with the building, kind of the used shape, the building facing north, and then the green space facing CC with the, the parking stalls on the south end of the site. So again, a lot of different options, kind of moving pieces here. I'm sure we'll dig into it more at the Planning Commission meeting next Thursday, but again, general, you know, comments and concerns from neighbors were stormwater, building height, and kind of matching the context of, of what's nearby, which is largely two-story, one or two-story duplexes, condos. But yeah, if you have any feedback or direction, we move forward and refine the plans, and love to hear it.
I like the parking lot on the street side, just thinking about kids and playing and, you know, putting the building closer to the street with the parking on the other side just doesn't leave a lot of space for that. So I'm glad you didn't put the other one in because it would have been really confusing for me, and I don't think I would have liked it. And I, I understand the, the height concern. I wonder how people would feel about a three-story building, because as we build more and more and we encroach upon more and more farmland, my thought is density is better when you're building these kinds of buildings. And so I, I get that, I like, I'm looking out at a wall now on my kitchen window, and I used to look out at a big field, so I get not wanting to have height right next to you. On the other hand, this feels to me like it's, you know, closer to the road and things like that, so that it could be, as you said, a really good spot for something like this. So my two cents.
Thank you.
No, I know what, what came for the Planning Commission, it was generally positive. They gave some feedback, as Ali said, as detailed here, and I think looking forward to working through the process with you, and hopefully we can make this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What we got here now?
What? So I mean, I have some questions and concerns about this, and I don't know.
Hang on, hang on. Hang on, hang on, hang on. There'll be a moment for public comment? All right, sorry. You should be outside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 4C, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. This agenda item allows the board to receive information and to ask questions of the researcher to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Board members may not expand their discussion beyond procedural matters. 15 minutes will be provided of this item with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Who'd like to speak to public comments? At least one person.
You have to go to the mic.
Please. Thank you.
I apologize for saying.
No, that's right.
I'm sorry about this. Did not want to pass by, that's my main thing.
I'll get your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Costa, 127 Lukeley Lane.
Okay, great. People speaking to the mic, thanks.
Yep, all right. So I mean, as I was mentioning with the development, the height was obviously mentioned a few times and along the lines, I mean, three-story would be better. Everything around it is one- to two-story and looking at the comp plan, it looks to be a bunch of single-family homes that's planned to be developed further to the west as well. So it would be very much a visual obstruction for the height and everything. So it doesn't really seem to coincide with what the surrounding land uses are, which is a concern. And my house being, it's such a three buildings over from where this is going to be developed, it was mentioned that there was a neighborhood meeting and I don't know what that all entailed for the scope of everything, but I would say that I am in a very close proximity to this development, but not having notified, being able to have a chance to speak at that forum as well is a concern to me as well. And I believe with apartments, obviously rentals, I believe everything else in that area is owned. I may be incorrect, but I believe it's all condominiums. So it's a mixture of land use type where it's a very different type. Rentals tend to not get cared for as well typically because they don't accept a reseller or upkeep it. So just having that to be a building that gets well-maintained throughout the years is something that's important as well. With the higher clearance, if it is built to that height, I have concerns about lighting and noise because there's no, could be no other buildings or trees to help block or dampen any of the noise or the light that would come from the upper floors from those units. And with obviously being rental, you can have turn around for who's renting it, so you never know if there is going to be, say, a loud occupant one year or not. Obviously, this is all subject to what actually happens. And with, just as I said, the existing character in the area, just trying to maintain it as the comp plan says, preserve the small-town character and feel. And with this general area, having this larger apartment complex wouldn't be in the vein of keeping that small-town character feel for this area. And I know there's apartments on the east side and that's a little more business industrial, well, not quite industrial, but it fits more with that surrounding with larger buildings. And I believe more the last point I have is just with apartments, there's typically less ownership of vehicles for the people and this location's not a good location for pedestrian or bikes because you're right on the county highway and there are no sidewalks or pedestrian paths that lead you to anything else. I know the conservancy's nearby, but there's nothing that would connect directly to that to get people to downtown with these other services. And that's, I believe, the final concern I had regarding this.
Thank you. Someone else report? Please. Go ahead, please. Get your name and address, please.
My name is Carol Cushing and I live at 1015 Drummond Drive.
Could you pull the mic a little closer?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I can't believe that anybody cannot hear me. I did not have an opportunity to attend the neighborhood meeting because I'm not within the allowable feet to be notified of it. But I am concerned about the height of the building. I can see, I would be able to see the building from my three-season porch, seven of my interior windows, my patio door, and my patio. Part of the reason why we moved from where we lived previously in Oregon out here is because it was nice and quiet. I have a concern with the parking lot facing the street. I think it looks tacky. I don't know how else to say it, but tacky. But you're adding also 200 and about 259 cars to traffic in that area. There's no stoplights. It looks like there's only one entrance and entrance exit out of that building. Traffic is already a concern. Getting home at night from work is challenging at times. Kimon time can be very challenging. Also, I just, there, well, there's no stoplights over there and then now we have the library going in too. So there's going to be a lot more added traffic there and that's my concern. And along with the gentleman that was here, there are no sidewalks on that, that street, none. So I'm concerned about the, if you look around Oregon, most of the apartment buildings are two or, some of the New Orleans, like Jefferson Crossing and the new one across from Tri-Trip, and then there's the Rosewood ones, they're three-story, the largest one. I think approximately 14 feet per story is what a apartment building generally is, about 15 or 14 feet per story is what it gen, average is what it is. So that's going to be a pretty significant tall building above the ordinance that you guys would have to resell for. So I'd like to see, I mean, if it's going to go there, I'd like to see it to be a little bit shorter. As the gentleman said, there are rentals over there, Bergamot Town Homes, there are rentals. They're very well kept, they're very, you know, very good products and stuff like that. And I'm sure that these gentlemen would keep the property well, but I'm very concerned about the height.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Jill Ellis at 280 Eagle Drive. My concerns are also about traffic. I'm concerned that such a lot of density would overwhelm County CC. The highway is also already crumbling in a lot of spots and already has quite a bit of traffic on it. But we're going to be adding the library, Village Hall, post office coming soon, Highlands of Netherwood are going up in that same area, a lot more houses there. And now you're going to put a very dense building up in this location. You'll have an awful lot of cars making left turns out of there onto Highway CC without a light. It just, I'm afraid it's going to cause a lot of accidents. I think Ali said that there's, the county might be rebuilding CC sometime in the next 10 years, but boy, that's a long time and a lot of traffic. That could be a very big problem there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Lori Newman-Bennig. I live at 268 Eagle Drive. Little nervous, so parking was mentioned again. We prefer, my husband and I prefer the parking in the front because it would be too much coming and going for what we would look out at. And just, you know, from an aesthetic point of view, I'd rather look at green space than parking. The size is a concern for us. Four stories is too much. And for me, you know, if the builder has said, we're going to do this development and we need to recoup our investment, well, that's not our problem, that's their problem. So they have to either figure out a way to spend less money on what they're doing or, you know, to decrease the size. We were told the other day at the neighborhood meeting that Oregon doesn't even have a hook and ladder that can go up four stories. So how is that going to help, you know, depending on when it gets built, you know, if there's a fire, how are they going to get that taken care of? There's drainage issues in the neighborhood. Ali spoke to that. You know, we living in Oregon have to accept that. But we've had drainage issues in our own neighborhood that we've had to mitigate. The townhouses on the, what do I want to say, parallel to us have had all kinds of drainage issues and they've had all kinds of promises. Our developer gave us promises, their developer gave us promises. And as far as we're concerned, the village didn't follow through with overseeing that well enough. They didn't make sure that builders were doing what they said they were going to do and then follow up with that. And then, that's my last concern, is the oversight concerns. There were lots of things that went wrong with our development that we don't feel the village watched over well enough, that we're having to take care of now. So I'm concerned that the village isn't going to watch this. These guys can be as reputable as they say they are. They can have a good track record, but they get behind, they have to hurry, they have to, you know, and then who loses? It's the people around us that lose. So I think that's what I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I wrote a letter. I'm better, not off the cuff. I'm Shelley Bauer. I live at 270 Eagle Drive. My husband Scott and I are newer transplants from out of state. We were attracted to Oregon in late 2021 and we purchased a condo directly south of the Epps property with Mr. Fink, Matt Fink's property in between. Some of our windows align directly with Mr. Fink's driveway, the same line of view Regency Property Management is proposing to use as its only entrance off CC. It is our opinion that the land and the discussion tonight is not well-suited for the density of the four-story multifamily apartment buildings being proposed. The density of the development such as this alongside the drainage issues and concerns are not matters to be taken lightly. And as Lori just said, we've had significant drainage issues that our development has had to pay for. My husband and I are big-picture thinkers though and are fully aware that this land will be developed at some point. Improvement to CC will come no matter what. However, the consideration of a development like this by the village on this specific lot is likely enticing. The revenue earned from 148 units should not outweigh reasonable consideration for what suits this piece of land best. Growth is inevitable in this area. We understood this when we purchased our condo. We knew the said property that had been on the market with a smaller development being considered. The zoning was such that we couldn't have imagined a four-story apartment building fitting into a long-range growth pattern of this particular parcel. In vain of the big picture, our greatest concern is that the thing property between us and the apartment could potentially be sold in the future to the same developer or the same, or a different developer. If the village allows this project to go through as proposed, it potentially makes easier for the next developer to build the same type of structure, completely changing the setting and possibly the value of the property, our property and those nearby. So I end with these questions. Is this the best possible project to help further the goal of annexation for one of three remaining parcels still needed for CC improvements? I know and understand that's a big piece of this. Does this multifamily apartment fit and align well with the single-family homes and condo units and other two-story developments that skirt the surrounding area? How does creating a higher-density structure that in turn more revenue from the development of this parcel adversely affect the people most directly impacted? We ask you to be wise about how you as leaders consider the density, aesthetics, and growth of this community as you make a decision about this project going forward. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deb Krems. I live at 260 Eagle Drive. And I agree with everything that's been said so far up here. My first concern is what Carleen brought up before, in the aesthetics of the area. The we are proposing is beautiful, there's no question. It's really pretty. It is totally out of character with all the other buildings around us. There are single-family dwellings all around us and there's a few apartments, but it's nothing that is going to be, it's all going to be ruined as that density or that population of people in 144 units, that whole aesthetics is going to be gone. The second concern, of course, is traffic. The traffic will be horrendous. The 144 units will probably have over 250 cars at least. There's no way that Highway CC, even if they start getting it more developed, will be able to handle that. It's just not feasible. And the third thing is the water drainage. Where we live, our back of our condos, and several of us that have spoken here, the back of our condos will face the four-story apartment building. We have, and I don't know if you're aware of this, we have had tremendous water drainage problems when we first moved in. In fact, our developer had to put in a new drainage system for us at their expense. In our own backyard, we have drainage sewers right in our backyard. And if you look at the schematic, all of that space would be kind of draining towards us. I know there's ditches on CC that fill up very quickly with heavy rain. And the other thing that the village brought up tonight with the, with the concern about sustainability and everything is that when we have that much water occurring much more often with our climate change, a hundred-year rain is occurring much more often than 100 years. We've already had one since I've lived in Oregon and we've lived here for 47 years. So the drainage problem is a huge concern. The sewer grates in our backyard will go directly to that retention pond, which is just down the hill from us. However, if you have all of that other water or all that other area being displaced and water draining into that retention pond, that's going to overflow.
May I put your rep up?
Yes, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Public comments time has expired. People going to move on with the board?
I'm the owner of the public here behind the proposed development. I'd like three minutes if possible.
One more? One more? Okay, please hang on, sorry.
Thank you.
Three minutes, please.
Yep, my name is Matthew Fink. I live at 5221 County Road CC. It's the property directly behind the proposed development. So my partner Shannon and I here have lived in that single-family home for about nine years now and we've seen Oregon grow around us. But the density of that housing, you know, really still makes it feel like a small town, which really drew us to the area in the first place. My biggest, I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else said, but I think one of my biggest concerns is access to this property. Jeff, are you driving the slides?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the proposal real quick, please? So our lot orders the proposed development to the south and to the east. And we've seen this drawing multiple times in multiple different forums and access continues to be over our property on the east side here. So that currently is a 10-foot-wide single-lane driveway and while the Epps do have an access agreement to get across that to a single-family home, having having this number of vehicles over that single-lane, ten-foot drive doesn't seem um feasible. And there currently is no sort of agreement between the developer and ourselves to allow them to build anything on our property. So I think there's a lot of like gray legal areas that we would need to kind of work out there. You know, what happens in Maxine happens on that, you know, especially with the volume of traffic we're talking about. Um, and then how to propose keeping, you know, kind of the tenants from that property from essentially using that parcel um that we currently own. Because, you know, it's still our property there. So um, I just want to make sure the village board kind of knows some of these more nuanced concerns about how these two properties in particular are laid out um beyond the general concerns of the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take over while the president steps away. Um, we are now on item five, which is approval of vouchers in the amount of seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. We have a motion to get it on the table. Uh, Jason and then Derek, seconds. Uh, any questions or comments?
I'm just looking at this and thinking back to the resolution before and thinking like this would be the place where we would be approving things, right? And so we technically approve all purchases.
So technically you're not actually approving purchases right now. You're, you're basically acknowledging purchases that were already made under this item.
Right, okay. But technically we do approve the purchases. I'm just thinking in terms of, right, okay. Kind of like the density line.
Uh, any other comments from board members, questions? Okay, Candy, you want to do a roll? Peterson?
Yes.
Fashion?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
And Deelo?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and now we move on to number six, the consent agenda. Should I read all of these? Is that how that works?
I haven't done it.
I think you can just ask for a, if there's a motion to approve.
Okay, okay. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion? Derek and Carleen. And now if there's any items A through D that people have questions about or want to pull out for separate consideration, now is the time. Okay. I'm not hearing any, so um, I guess all those in favor of approving uh six, A through D and the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Uh, okay, let's go to, we did item seven A one before. Uh, so now let's go to item seven B, the Ad hoc Public Arts Committee. Uh, number one is approval for acquisition of Canvas' Wellness Welcome Collection comprised of eight functional art pieces for installation in J.C. Park. And this, uh, Jeff, did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so we can talk a little bit about that. Um, this is just an opportunity that kind of made its appearance to us through Randy and myself. Um, we've kind of vetted and talked to representatives from this company. Uh, what we were told is, you know, they were offering or they were offering us an opportunity to accept these up to eight pieces in their welcome collection. It's a very unique product. Um, they're actually from recycled, uh, or upcycled, I guess would be the better term, wind turbine blades that have been taken out of commission. Um, it's kind of a unique program that they work with companies to fund um the installation of these. And so what we have is, just to kind of best explain this, you can see these, these pieces here. There's actually uh four pieces here and um, and then there's other pieces in this. You get one beacon, one rose, one gust, one fay, and then, or I think two fays and two finchers or something like that. But it's basically, large companies are looking at ways that they can help their uh sustainability program. And so they actually fund large purchases or large endowments to this company. And then this company finds municipalities and other places that are willing to place this in, in parks and other areas. So this, this is kind of some really unique pieces. Um, each piece would come with a plaque that would tell the location of where it's from, um, exactly as well as the company that was sponsoring it. Could be a local company, it could be a regional company, it could be a national company. I've actually kind of earmarked as a possibility for these to be probably incorporated into the new J.C. Park. Um, and that we would go with instead of planters, we're not trying to increase, increase the number of planters because those are high maintenance. Uh, but really just seeding, um, probably some of the narrow pieces up in the pickleball area, some of the wider pieces in between the dugout areas and those concrete mezzanines, um, just a neat opportunity. This is not committing us to spend any money. In fact, I think the, it's been a while since I wrote this, but I believe the collection is like thirty-four thousand dollars or something like that. Huh? Thirty-seven thousand dollars plus shipping and handling, which is also handled by the, the donor. Um, all this really does is just, uh, we're taking this for you as approval to allow us to be put on this list. And they're anticipating that everyone will be funded. So this isn't a guarantee that we would get this. I would come back with you just as a notice to say we were selected and, you know, good, good for us. But um, if, if this did happen, it would be something that would likely get installed late of this year, which times perfectly with when we anticipate J.C. Park being truly usable and the concession stand being done. So it's a lot to unload, but are there any questions we have on the pieces? Carleen?
So I'm looking at page fifty of the packet, and this is the eight pieces. I mean, I know they're in different places, but all of them, those are the eight pieces. And these would be permanent, is that correct? Is that be a permanent installation?
They would be permanent as permanent goes, right?
Right, right, until they wear out, which would be a long time.
Exactly, yeah, they're, they're, they're fiberglass, they've trimmed, they, they take care of all the edges. The, what you see is the black area here is, is actually kind of a recycled, again recycled rubber. Uh, their whole idea of this is how they can repurpose these. And I think honestly, it's kind of a neat mix between our sustainability initiative as well as our public art. Because I do think they're kind of a little artsy. Derek?
I understand that there's a long process ahead of this, but I guess my feedback would be, um, I, I think it's tremendous, first off. And the pieces are, are pretty cool too. As far as putting all of our eggs in the J.C. Park basket for the placement, I guess when it comes to the public art, we've kind of made it a focus to spread it throughout the community. I'd like, and just to tie in, I would like to at least consider putting maybe a couple of the pieces down there, maybe watering triangle part as it comes forward, but again, I know there's a long process and there's a lot.
Yeah, we'd like, we'd, I know one thing I'd think of like the beacon, which is kind of that centerpiece and it has a light on it that's a solar-powered light. I can see that being kind of the entrance to J.C. Park. The narrower ones really fit well, I think, in the walkway between the pickleball courts. But other ones, I mean, it really, you know, I kind of like to put them on a concrete base wherever we would put them. Um, but yeah, I'm open to putting them different places.
And it just kind of ties in as people go from their baseball game at J.C. Park or pickleball to downtown to have lunch or whatever. It just kind of ties into what we should be learning.
Right.
Any other comments? Uh, we have a recommended uh motion to approve then. Derek and Jason. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those favorite indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I like the way you got the kind of chorus in.
Thank you, and we'll let, we'll let you know if we're selected.
Thank you. Okay, seven C, Finance and Personnel Committee Financial Policy Handbook. And I think Amanda, do you want to speak to this?
I can, oh, Martin? All right, so the Financial Policy Handbook, so this is a tool that we established in our strategic plan a couple of years back. And we've been working on this project for about the last year. So what this is doing is um putting it to words and documenting a lot of the policies, financial policies that we have had unwritten or rules of thumb that we've, we've kind of abided by or practices that we've, we've undertaken here over the last several years. So I, I have my memo in, in the packet that kind of goes through each policy in, in more detail, but I'll just cover a couple of highlights here, um, and things that we've sort of talked about in the past. So the, the General Fund Reserve Policy is in this. So that's the holding twenty-five, thirty-five percent of our unassigned fund balance for essentially a rainy day. Um, this establishes reserves for our water and sewer utility, matching what we have in our, have seen in our financial management plans the last couple of years. This establishes the written procedures for how we've operated the budget process the last couple of years. Um, it also establishes the ten-year capital improvement plan, uh, which we did for the first time last year and will be updating this year. Uh, it also sets a policy for the, um, the ten-year financial management plan, which we've done the last two years and will update again this year. It also includes the policy related to um, a rule of thumb we've had the last few years in terms of not exceeding seventy-five percent of our allowable statutory debt limit. So that is written into these policies as well. And it also includes a, a number of other things that I have here in my memo. So the, the Finance and Personnel Committee looked at this in April, um, and March as well. And the committee recommended adoption at their April meeting. Uh, the policy's been out to the department heads for review, been reviewed by Lisa as well. And Ellers, our financial consultant, has, has reviewed it as well. There's, there's two things that I want to offer as changes that I handed out with these two documents just before the meeting. Um, so Dave Ferris, who's our um primary contact with Ellers, he had reviewed the handbook and signed off on it, but he'd also sent it to Brian Raymer, who we've had here a couple of times and dealing with specifically utilities. And uh, he had a chance to review it, he just sent a couple of comments over the weekend to me that are documented here in these changes. They're relatively minor, but they, um, documents and things that he felt would be important for rating agencies when looking at utility debt and having these in there would be beneficial to the village. The first was on page twelve, it's just acknowledging that um, the utilities are subject to extreme maintenance expenses at times. Water main breaks, things of that nature. Uh, and rating agencies like to see that, uh, utilities are recognizing that and documenting that. The second one is uh, page thirty-eight at the bottom, um, replacing cost recovery with debt coverage. And the cost recovery is, the debt coverage, rewriting this actually covers a little bit better what this section is intending to do. So the policy will state that the village wants to maintain a minimum debt coverage set to our covenanted debt. So which basically means we want to have enough financing, finances to cover our debt payments every year. A, a good goal to have. Um, and then, but with a goal of having preferred coverage of, of more than that. So actually having more fund financing than um what we needed to cover our debt. So again, you mentioned that's something that um plays well with bond agencies when we go out to, to rate our debt. And that would be two things I would ask for to include in any adopting uh motion. So I'm happy to take any questions or anything of that nature, otherwise I think these are ready for adoption.
Okay, thank you, Martin. Now we are, we have a recommended motion to approve, this present, Carleen? I'm sorry? Please.
So I'm looking at page one seventeen of the packet where the procurement process is. And I'm thinking again back to the Sustainability Committee and um, you know, trying to find things that are sustainable. And I wonder in the procurement process if this is the place where we might want to add something related to sustainability?
Yeah, so on page, it'll be one-twenty of the packet. Um, under section five, purchasing preferences. Um, there is a section there that notes that um, the village board encourages procurement authorities, which tends to be department heads, um, to consider the following factors in making procurement decisions. And one of those is environmental protection.
I'll move to approve with the suggested changes.
And Jason? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, and thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Uh, seven, the Planning Commission, item one. Orders twenty-three dash oh-four, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of property located at two-ten and two-twenty Jamesville Street from central business to planned development district related to a commercial building addition. Application submitted by Theo Properties. Commission staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Ali, say that.
So this is a uh planned development zoning request for an addition to the building that was um, used for a long time. It was K and K lawn in sport, um, two-ten, two-twenty Jamesville kind of kitty corner from Little Buddies. Um, the feels are going to be purchasing in a couple of weeks here from the current owners and would like to do an addition to that space to allow for some more commercial, commercial businesses um to be in there the way that they have the plans drawn and could actually have three suites for three different commercial businesses. I don't think they've determined any particular users for that space um yet, but glad to have some more available spaces downtown. Uh, the reason for the zoning request and flexibilities here is because this is in our downtown zoning district. Ideally, the buildings are up to the sidewalk, kind of the historic downtown where there, uh, there's not a parking lot between the sidewalk and the building. Uh, but just the way that this site has developed, um, and I think when the building was built, it's obviously been grandfathered in. It was a previous, I think, service station. So over the years, it's been, you know, recited and refinished, but kind of bringing it into just the, the current zoning rules to have that setback be further from the, the sidewalk than is required. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, no concerns from the planning commission.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table. Uh, Carleen and Amanda, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thanks, Ali. Seven C two, certified certified made of the properties located at two-hundred and two-twenty North Main Street and one-twenty-three East Grove Street. Advocate Gorman and Company in the Oregon School District, recommend a motion to approve as presented.
This is the cleanup of some property lines um between Gorman's um Redberg Schoolhouse and the building they owned to the north there. And then um, the school district property, so Gorman was doing some work over on their properties, realized that there was a, a parcel owned by the school district that kind of interfered with some of the work they planned to do. And ultimately, um, just combining, you can see on the um, the pages, there's, you know, about a dozen parcels that made up all the different school buildings and additions. And so just combining that into one parcel, um, the school district agreed to this, um, given that Gorman would kind of pay to do the work um, and the school district would um clean up some, it's an old alleyway that they had access to. So just tiny up some of our parcels downtown, so that lot one will be all school district owned and then lots two and three are for me.
Okay, motion to approve as presented. Who's in favor, Derek, Carleen? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item seven, E. Oregon Area Fire and Mass District Commission, minutes from May fourth, for information only. Item eight, unfinished business items for discussion, possible action. A, resolution, uh, number twenty-three dash nineteen urging the state legislature to provide necessary funding for local governments and maintain local control. Recommend a motion to approve as presented. Recommended motion to approve as presented. Should we do it, Carleen?
Sure, so at the last, at our last meeting, we were talking about the shared revenue bill that was taken out of the governor's budget as a standalone bill. Ironically, tomorrow is also municipal government's, what is it, local government lobby day at the Capitol, and it's also the day of the senate hearing on the original bill. So there's a listing here of all the things that are impacted by the current, the original bill. The state assembly has since changed some things about it and passed it along party lines, and there will be a hearing tomorrow, as I said, in the state senate, there's disagreement, there's a lot that's happening, it's our opportunity to weigh in on what we feel should happen. I personally feel, and we talked a little bit about it last meeting, that shared revenue should not come with lots of strings that impact local control, whether it's the village of Oregon or the city of Milwaukee. We need shared revenue to come back to us so that we can provide the services for our residents that they need and deserve, and with money that we've paid into the state. So I don't feel the need to necessarily read the resolution, but that's the reasoning behind it. I'm happy to read it, or we can read it, I mean, I'm happy to read it, because I feel strongly about this, but I don't know that I need to.
That's not a motion anymore.
Oh, I was supposed to do a motion, so sorry. That's my motion, I want to pass this.
Well done. And Amanda, the second?
Yes.
Further discussion? Amanda?
I just reiterate, everything Carleen said, this is something that I am also very passionate about. Our revenue has not kept pace with inflation, and many municipalities are struggling, and we, you know, this, this needed to be done. The legislature needs to hear from our local governments about what's going on and how we can better serve our constituents, so absolutely, it's a good thing.
Derek?
Just to kind of piggyback on Carleen and Amanda's statements there, when we talked a month or two ago about the wheel packs, and Martin laid out very eloquently in his paperwork, the decrease in funding that the village has actually had over the last decade, this is one of those times where we may actually be able to right the ship and kind of get back on the right track.
Good. I agree.
I would just say that I'm going to the local government lobby day tomorrow, and they will be hearing from me there, so you're not just hearing from me here, they hear from me there as well. Waiting, Carleen?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any more to discuss? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Eight B, Green, Greenview Preserve subdivision items, can you take this here? Okay. Let's see, eight B one, amended, excuse me, eight B one, amended and restated master development agreement. There's, oh, Deborah, get her off here.
Back on March first, twentieth, the board voted to approve final plat for Greenview Preserve, and along with that came a master development agreements and an agreement for subdivision improvements for phase one of that project. In between times, Veridian has approached us and asked whether or not they proposed an acquisition of the property for Greenview Preserve, in which the property for the first phase would be owned by this V H Greenview Preserve that we have an existing master development agreement with, and then the remainder of the property would be owned by an investment vehicle called VNO Investors LLC. The trouble with that was that the final plat includes certificates of ownership that has to be signed by the owners, and so if you're going to have multiple owners on that final plat, then they need to have each a sponsor, so that's a relatively minor part that the final plat needs to modify. Second, the master development agreement needs to be modified to make VNO Investors a party to that agreement, and so there are a couple of changes that Matt and I worked with the representatives from Veridian on, but probably the biggest one was inclusion of language that would restrict VNO's ability to do any kind of development on the land if they can't. They're simply an asset holder of that property until it's ready to be conveyed to V H Greenview Preserve to actually do the development for the public improvements on that property. So included with that is our restrictive covenants that there will have to be filed after the final plat is reported with the registered deeds, that says essentially the same thing, saying that they are prohibited from conducting any land disturbing activities or other development on their property, and then they also are prohibited from pulling any building permits. And the nice thing about that is that it actually follows them in their success of an interest in the property, so if for some reason the project goes under, they need to pass that property on to somebody else, they're still tied in terms of what they can do, unless and until they receive a, an agreement with village board for another master development agreement to conduct those improvements, so. I don't think it matters what order the board takes up in, but on the agenda, we've got the master development agreement that's been amended and restated. The item two is the amended and restated agreement for subdivision improvements for phase one, and this just simply modifies to have reference to do with amended, restated master development agreement. And then the resolution simply is additional approval for the revised final plat that just takes into account those changes.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion for item eight B one. Amanda and Jason, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight B two, amended and restated agreement for subdivision improvements for phase one, I'll move to approve. Amanda, second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight B three, resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two, a resolution officially approving the Green, Greenview Preserve revised final plat. Like that's a motion? Jason? Derek? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Derek. Okay.
Before we go to the next session, can you take five minutes?
You bet, I'll take five minutes anyway.
Are you quiet?
Thank you.
All right, we're ready? Okay, we'll reconvene out of eight C Village Board vacancies. Candy was kind enough to prepare this perfect memo for me, much better than my notes, but the following candidates have submitted an application to be interviewed at the May 22 Village Board meeting. The current Village Board members have requested their order be drawn at random. In alphabetical order, the candidates are Brian Berkland, Thomas Davidson, Michael Doran, Christopher Falconer, Timothy Higgins, Thomas Kirstover, and Lynette McDaniel. Candy's statement here is I can judge, read each name aloud and place their name in a bag. Names are drawn randomly, and the order is as follows. Michael Duran, Christopher Falconer, Thomas Davidson, Brian Berkland, Timothy Higgins, Thomas Kirstover, and Lynette McDaniel. So we'll have each of the... Any questions on that? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Michael Duran, Christopher Falconer, Thomas Davidson, Brian Berkland, Timothy Higgins, Thomas Kirstover, and Lynette McDaniel. Thomas so far? So... Oh, yes, thank you. Yes. I should note that there were three additional initial applicants that are since withdrawn. That was Larry Mayo, Joanna Lewis, and Ryan Minor. That sound correct there? Did I miss anybody? Okay, great. So the Village Board is determined that we'll have each candidate come up and speak for up to five minutes, and then after that, we'll look at the nomination and voting process. And we'll call their names in order as discussed. First would be Michael Duran.
Phil, I have a video for Michael.
Oh, okay, sorry. Want to do that alone? You want to do that?
So one of the things that we've done in the past, this is an open meeting, and we can't ask anybody, I mean, we can't force anybody to leave, but we do ask that the other people that we're gonna... Well, we're not doing the questions, though. It's just statements.
Right.
I think we still probably should just... So, well, all right, so in the past, when we did an interview, we asked the applicants to, other applicants, to leave so that people would be here one at a time, and that way you weren't hearing all the other applicants' answers before you go. It gives kind of an advantage. So it's up to you, but we would encourage any applicants in the interest of fairness to step out, and then we'll just call you in when it's your turn. And once you've gone, you can remain for the rest of the meeting, so.
They can go to the room next to us, has some chairs and tables, and it's about five degrees cooler. I'd be willing to go over there and just call them over.
That's what my next job is.
Yeah, one of us will come over.
Okay, so since Michael Duran's first, do you have it?
I have a video.
Okay.
And it'll come through the speakers on the TVs. Do you want lights off or the video or not? You can do them right there if you want. Okay, one, two, three, and then light off. Good job, Candy. That's great.
Hello, my name is Michael Doran, and I wish I could attend the Village Board meeting and talk about these board appointments and make my presentation appear personally. But I've had this longstanding commitment to meet in Canada on some important matters. There are people from England and some Canadians that I'm meeting with, and I just couldn't postpone it, and I couldn't get out of attending this meeting, unfortunately. So hopefully, this video will help you understand a little bit more about me, so that you may better understand where I'm coming from, who I am, and why hopefully you'll consider my application. So I live at 319 Jameson Street. I've been a resident of Dane County for, well, nearly sixty years. In Oregon, I've lived on Jameson Street for about four years. I'm a semi-retired professional engineer in the environmental engineering field, water, wastewater, solid waste, Ezerns waste, industrial waste. Those are my fields of practice, states in the Midwest, and a number of eastern states. I've worked with communities from a thousand population to a million population in that period of time. I retired from my consulting practice at the end of the year 2000. After that, I was appointed a professor of practice in the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering at UW Madison. At that time, it was recognized that typical professors focused on research, whereas the student is interested in practicing their engineering after they get out of school. So design courses are best taught by people with design experience. So I became involved in that and taught a total of about ten classes in the department while I was there. And in addition to that, one of the things I did was develop an all-new master's degree program from scratch. It's an online program in environmental engineering, so students that are in practice already can take this online program in the evenings, over a few years, get their master's degree. So we had students from all over the world engaged in this. It was a lot of fun actually doing that. But I'm no longer teaching. I have a couple of committee assignments at the university as well, so my days are much freer than they were in the past. I just have these Canadian projects that I'm working on. I have nothing in the area that would conflict. I have no business interests in the area. So I see no conflicts at all in serving the community in this fashion. As far as other qualifications go, I've been board member, chair, or president of a number of large organizations in the area, one being the Qantas Club of Downtown Madison, the Service Club, where I was board member, chair, a couple of times. And also the foundation of the Qantas Clubs of Madison, where I'm currently the foundation president. I've served in that role in the past also, and also on the board several times. A large professional society, the Water Environment Federation, has a local branch, the Central States Water Environment Association, and a Wisconsin section of that. I've served as the chair of that section and board member. And then in addition, the American Academy of Environmental Engineers, that's the group that sets standards, if you will, for environmental engineering practice. I was the chair of the Education Committee, responsible for accrediting environmental engineering programs at universities around the country. At the community level, I did serve on the Water Utility Commission in the city of Anata. So from 1970...
Okay, Jeff, I'm gonna have to end it. I'm gonna have to end it here.
End of that year.
Yes, he's at five minutes. It's unfairness.
Oh, I thought it was ten, that's why, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so Christopher Falconer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Summertime, you have.
Welcome. Hi, how do I begin?
Hi, you can start at a time. We have five minutes, we'll be timing you and let you know when it gets...
I probably won't take the whole five minutes. My name is...
Well, it's up to five minutes.
My name is Christopher Faulkner. I moved to Oregon with my wife in 2017, and we now have an almost four-year-old, and she takes up a lot of my time. My wife and I came, both of us from a very small town. My small town, the biggest feature was the grain elevator, if that tells you anything. And that's kind of what brought us to Oregon originally. We moved up from Illinois in 2010, please don't hold that against me. And we were in a couple of different apartments. We got to know the area very well, and the more we got to know the area, the more we liked the Village of Oregon. We wanted to move down here. We've heard so many good things about it until we moved down here, and everything about it was true. We started getting involved in things here and there. My wife is involved in Fourteen South Artists. They have their little shop in the Water Tower Pump House. My in-laws moved up here in 2020. They moved up here when their granddaughter was born, and they are desperately looking for a place in town now because they want to stay in Oregon. My father-in-law is part of the Oregon Park Band. My kid loves the parks. She goes to Oregon Public or Oregon Preschool Incorporated. She's made a lot of friends, and I saw the opportunity to become part of the Village Board, and this would be my opportunity to give back to the village that has given so much to my family. So why should I be considered? I'm kind of used to the whole parliamentary procedure that you all have here, a little more informal, but I've been a member of the Board of Directors for the Madison Sports Car Club and the Midwestern Council of Sports Car Clubs for about five or so years now. I am currently president of the Madison and Midwestern Council Sports Car Clubs. The Midwestern Council is a 500 to 600-member organization throughout Illinois, Wisconsin, Michigan, Indiana, Iowa, all sorts of states around here. My job as president of that organization is to make sure all of things run smoothly on the business side. The organization of our yearly schedule of our events, our yearly budget meetings and things like that, insurance certifications, all that stuff falls on my shoulders. I've been doing that for two years now. Prior to that, I was the vice president of the club for two years before that, where the president at the time was gone half the time anyway, so I was doing half the job as is. It's a big organization. We do have a lot of people that do different jobs, and one of those jobs that I do is to be able to delegate and coordinate all of those disparate voices and all of those different committees and things like that to be able to function as a whole. So I think that kind of qualifies me to be part of it. Pardon me, I'm a little nervous. I'm used to standing up and walking around as I talk, so I apologize for that. So what do I believe in? The things that I think are important to be part of this board, that everybody has a chance to voice their opinions. Just tonight, I noticed that the public comment section was elongated to give other people a chance to talk. I like that idea. I like being able to give everybody a chance to voice their opinion. Respectful discussion is very important. I have no problem going till the wee hours of the morning to let everybody have a chance to thoroughly discuss a topic. I don't like things going too quickly unless they really have to. I like to look at the big picture of things. I don't really like the micromanagement of small details. In my job as president of Midwestern Council, I'm always looking five to 10 years down the road. Everything looks good now, but what is it going to look like in three years, in five years? Are we going to have to get new insurance? Are the tracks that we go to going to be there in three to five years, or are we going to have to start looking for new venues in the future? What is coming up? I also want to build on that for what the next person is going to have to deal with. I'm not going to be there forever. What's the next person going to do? Something to look at down the road. Biggest thing for me, too, is it's okay to say no sometimes to people. It's hard to do, but it can be for the better in the long run. The biggest thing is everyone should be treated equally. Everyone should have their chance and go from there. And I'm really bad at wrapping up, so I'll just say thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi.
Welcome. You have up to five minutes, and we'll pretty strictly enforce it.
All right. So I'm Tom Davidson. I've been living in Oregon now for about 25 years. We moved here shortly after moving up, and I got married. We actually had found a job up in Wisconsin, and we're looking for areas that had really decent schools and at the time, really affordable housing, so. Thanks. Since then, we've got three kids in the district. We are reasonably active, both politically and in various volunteer organizations and club activities. I tend to be a bit of a noisemaker in regular life, so a lot of the things that happen in the village, I tend to have very strong opinions on, but not generally enough to annoy people. And it's actually for that reason that I had never even considered campaigning for office. So when the opening appeared, I realized that I think I have a skill set that the board could use, but which I normally would never consider throwing my hat in the ring for otherwise. It felt a little bit self-aggrandizing and perhaps a oasis, you know, say, yes, please, please bring me in and have me help you. But I think Oregon has developed enough that it needs people who genuinely care about it and who are willing to try to be calm and rational and fair-minded at all times. These are things that I do believe of myself. As I mentioned in my initial letter, I'm generally very detail-oriented, very organized. I like to think that I'm both a decent communicator and a decent listener. So given all of the above, I think I'm a natural fit broadly. There are some concerns simply about the volume of meetings and the timing of meetings that, you know, working around a career is often a little bit difficult, but beyond that, in terms of practicality, I think it works very well. I don't have some of the very traditional law or construction or standard backgrounds that you would often see in this scenario. I am a tech guy like Chris, but I do think I've got enough familiarity with what goes on there. I've done accounting, I've done general management, I've been an executive at a few places. I think I can find my way around, you know, village government and, you know, the original Robert's Rule scenarios. So all in all, given the amount that I'm interested, I thought I'd at least put it out there. Might not be the best fit, but I figured it was worth a shot.
Thank you.
And just, you know, I am deliberately keeping this short. We were talking about it in there, and we're like, my God, they're going to be so sick of people by then we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Burke. Brian, we'll have five minutes, up to five minutes.
Okay.
And we'll pretty strictly enforce that.
Sounds good. Hello, my name is Brian Berkland. I'm 55 years old. I've been a resident of Oregon for 24 years. I moved here from Madison, Wisconsin. I was in East Sider, where I grew up. We moved here, my wife and I. We have a 20-year-old daughter. She's currently a senior in Concordia University in Mequon. My career was a firefighter/paramedic for 35 years. I recently retired after a 35-year career with the Town of Madison Fire Department. And it wasn't by choice, but our years of service came up as far as my fire chief had some medical issues and really thought that it was best at that time for us to dissolve a little earlier than what was planned, which was supposed to be October 30th of 2022. So we, I retired officially November 1st of, November 1st of 2020. So I had multiple opportunities to pursue my career further within the City of Madison Fire Department, but chose that at that time that it was best that I would just continue other adventures in my life and turn the page. And then Chief Linsbyer from Oregon Fire Department reached out to me and pulled me back in. So I've been working with him quite extensively, along with Division Chief Justburger, which has been a pleasure. So I've been doing that as well as I have my own side business, and I currently live at 216 Robinson Road here in Oregon.
Open to any questions? Anything further that you'd like to hear? No?
Are you employed by the Oregon Area Fire District at this time or no?
I am a P O P, paid on premise.
The one thing I'm not certain about is whether there's a compatibility of office issue. If you were appointed to serve on the board, I'm not sure whether you would be able to continue in that position. It's a little complicated because the fire district is managed by, depending on, by a commission. The village is a member, so there's a compatibility of office question that might have to be addressed. Is that something you've thought about or aware of?
I have, and as long as I'm not voting on specific issues within the fire department, I believe that I can still serve as a role as a trustee.
Yeah, and I'm just not sure because there's this legal doctrine called compatibility. So I know you couldn't be employed by the village itself and serve on the village board. That would be, there'd be an compatibility between those two legally. What I don't know is whether, I just don't know whether that applies to the fire district because the district is, again, it's somewhat separate from the village. The village and other communities are members of the district and operate through a commission. So I just can't tell you off the top of my head, I just don't know whether there's a compatibility issue there or not. So just wanted you to...
And I have spoken to the fire chief regarding that issue, exact issue, and if I was deemed and appointed to that position of trustee, that I would take a leave of absence from the fire department if that was deemed necessary.
Okay.
Hi. Tim Higgins.
Five minutes, and we'll pretty, up to five minutes, and we'll pretty strictly...
Okay. First of all, is there room for two more chairs up there? Definitely need some more, some more microphones up there. Okay, I'm Tim Higgins. I've lived in the Oregon area for just about 30 years, have three kids who graduated Oregon High School. I really love this community. That's part of why I wanted to present myself as a possible candidate to serve the village. I have a history of some service to the community. I've worked with OCA Media, helping with some of the sports broadcasts for high school teams. I served with the Oregon Boosters Club as the boys soccer rep, and next year I'll be taken over as the treasurer of that organization. In addition, I deliver meals for the senior center on Thursdays, once a week. Been doing that for about three years, running the film every once in a while there. I've also done other community service work with Occupy Madison, The Beacon, and Badger Prairie Needs Network. I have a strong history in business, senior management position of various companies, so I understand the idea of being responsible for a large group of people, a large organization.
So I understand the idea of being responsible for a large group of people, a large organization, I have that P and L responsibility. And I understand the idea of, as an officer of a corporation, you have certain obligations to serve the organization rather than necessarily what your personal interest might be. Right now, I run a small business. We serve senior citizens, providing in-home care for seniors and the disabled. And that's part of the general approach I've taken in my career to move away from the corporate world and do work that's a little bit more soul fulfilling, a little bit more community focused. And that's part of what brings me here. The priorities I would have as a member of the village board would be looking for us to improve our financial position, especially with respect to debt, looking to manage growth in a way that doesn't create the kind of upset that we heard from some folks today and that I heard last Monday at the neighborhood meeting, but that responsibly grows the village while maintaining its character. But then also the issues that Carlene talked about with Resolution twenty-three nineteen, I think is an existential threat that faces a lot of communities. If you look at what's happening in Texas, it seems that there is a political advantage people are trying to gain by stripping power away from municipalities. And I think that's something we should be loud and vocal about in opposition to. That would be a fight I'd be interested in participating in. I think I have exercised in my previous jobs and in my life, sound, responsible judgment and a sensible approach to things, assuming we start from about, you know, twenty-five, age of twenty-five on, I'll stand behind my record. The, one thing I tell all of my customers, I tell all of my employees in my business, I am not perfect, but I am accountable. And I would take that same approach to them. So thank you.
Questions? No questions.
Thank you.
There's two more to go. Thanks, Thomas. We'll be, well, up to five minutes and we'll be, I'm pretty close. Okay. Thank you. First off, I want to thank the village board for the opportunity to present, unite my interests and qualifications, fulfill one of the vacant trustee spots on the village board of trustees. So open, I want to say that this is a very unusual situation for me. Not because I'm unfamiliar with presenting in the public and not because I, I I have never presented to the village board. I've presented to the village board a number of times over the years. What is out of character for me is talking about myself. Typically, that is very out of character for me. I really don't spend a lot of time talking about myself. So there's three things about my experience that make me a good choice for village trustee. First off, I have forty years of business and finance experience that provided me with the ability to understand a broad range of financial and statistical data. I'm comfortable with numbers. I tend to be very analytical when I consider problems and opportunities and especially projects. In my business experience, I've been involved in planning, managing projects, well, wide range of projects, both IT projects, building projects, quite a wide variety of different kinds of activities. I'm very strong on the planning aspects of project work. I also have a vested interest in to see the Oregon community grow and thrive. This is my hope. Having lived in the village of Oregon for over thirty-eight years, I've seen this community grow from about twenty-five hundred people when a biggest issue that was before the village board was whether we would put it in traffic light or not. I've seen that Oregon become a dynamic and engaged community, which you're all very familiar with. The thought that there's several hundred people out there watching us right now is sort of inspiring to how great this community is and how involved they are and participate in everything that we do. Since retiring from business in two thousand fourteen, I've been very engaged with several important community committees, including the leadership of the Oregon Area Food Pantry. During that time, I helped form the first board of directors. I established a new mission and vision for the organization. I led the construction of the new building. I changed the way that they recruited volunteers and greatly expanded the services that they provide within the community. I've also served as president of the OCA Media, where we've had a lot of organizational change. We've adopted new technologies and there was the expansion of the different programs and services, helping to under, to support and create that visibility and transparency that's so important in government. The other question I believe is important for you to consider is why am I interested in being a village trustee? I enjoy an active role in the communities and groups that I become involved with. When my children needed after-school care, I volunteered and led the after-school class. When my family got involved in competitive swimming, I got on the board of the Oregon Community Swim Club and was president and chair and vice president for a number of years. When my children reached high school, I became an Oregon, involved in the Oregon Boosters and actually served for the present as two years to that organization as well. My qualifications give me applicable perspective that will make me a valuable trustee. I've had the opportunity of working with a number of the village trustees in other projects and working on the food pantry in OCA Media. I believe I can still establish a collaborative relationship with each of you and help to come to a consensus in addressing the village's business. Most importantly, to me, I believe that being on the village board is a place that I can make a meaningful and important contribution. Given my qualifications, aptitudes, and experiences, I would be a valuable addition to the village board and ask you to nominate and vote for me to fill one of the vacancies on the village board. Thank you for listening. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much. Goodbye. Welcome, Lynette. We have up to five minutes to speak and what's up with the question?
Um, great. Well, good evening. My maiden name started with a Z, so I'm very comfortable going last, thank you. Something that I pride myself in. My name is Lynette McDaniel. People call me Lynn. I wanted to start with a little bit of background about myself. I graduated from Edgewood College in two thousand fourteen with a degree in Broadfield Social Studies and a concentration in history teaching and a minor in political science. I went on to use that degree to teach high school social studies at Deerfield High School for seven years. I taught all sorts of social studies classes as well as government and advanced placement government. And I left after seven years of teaching to focus more on my family and to just have a different career path. I now work for Nordic Consulting as a practice specialist. I also received my master's degree in curriculum and instruction in two thousand twenty-one during a pandemic, which was really fun, from UW Superior. My family consists of my husband, who I married in two thousand sixteen, and I have three children. Aurora, who is five, Liam will be two at the end of June, and Eleanor, who just turned six months old yesterday. My family, my husband and my firstborn, we moved to Oregon in two thousand twenty, right before the pandemic hit, which was exciting. We came to Oregon originally because of the small-town feel. I grew up in a small town. My father was a police officer and my mother was a teacher. And so service was a big part of our family and our culture. And so I knew that coming to Oregon would give me some opportunity to deeply entrench myself into a community. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit and that got a little bit more challenging. But my family has already utilized quite a few of the Oregon village services, the parks, the library, festivals, events. And I've been pleasantly surprised with what I've encountered here. As a potential member of the board, my interests first and foremost focus around family. I can bring a perspective of a young mother who's often looking for opportunities to find safety and sustainability for future generations of my children. I also mentioned this in my questions, but one of my ideas or interests is business development, growing the commercial footprint of Oregon, bringing visitors to this place, I think is really beneficial to showing off what we truly have here, which I believe is a true gem of the county. My qualifications, I have a large passion for government. I have studied government for a number of years and I love local government. I'm a rational decision maker. I am a mother of three children, so I make decisions quite often. And I know how to take in input, research that issue, and then find a non-biased way of settling an issue. I also have a strong interest in giving back, helping others, and finding ways to improve people's lives. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, before we proceed on the House committee, if you're following proceedings up until tonight, some discussion was made that whoever was appointed would be seated immediately. I've been informed by those wiser than me that that's not a good idea. So while you may be selected tonight, you need to go through a swearing-in process, et cetera. So your nominee would be our next scheduled board. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you all for doing this. And if you are not chosen to be on the board tonight, we have many committee openings. Please, please consider serving in that capacity. It's a great way to still give back to your community. You've got Transportation Committee, D E I Committee, Needs People. What else? Or other openings? Yes, Transportation, yeah, for sure. Sustainability might have some, lots. So please don't be discouraged, stay involved, and we're really thankful that you stepped up. This is not an easy process and it's wonderful to see. So how many applicants we got?
I would just add too that over the years, many people that started applying for vacancies ended up on the board and they have that rank for the board. So I wouldn't let your interest necessarily end here if you're not going to. Okay, the process we discussed is that we would take nominations. So we would be taking nominations for the first vacancy. And then once the nomination's been nominated, we'll come up for a second. But I would certainly encourage anyone to speak in favor of the alternative seconding. And then we would go ahead and, I'm sorry, slate, and then we would go ahead and vote. Everyone comfortable with that? So then I would open the nominations.
I'd nominate Timothy Higgins.
On second.
It's not necessary, it's second. You can speak in, other nomination, or if you want to speak, speak in support of the second. Amanda?
Can I get you two nominations or does it?
Sure, I mean, no, I think so.
I'd like to nominate Tom Kirschdorfer and Lynette McDaniel, or the, sorry.
Okay. Two folks I was interested in have been nominated, so. Okay. Any other nomination? Okay, I will close the nominations. And I will begin voting, so it would be a roll call vote, potentially yes or no. I'm sorry, do you want to have this sit? For, or, Amanda?
Yeah, I'm going to speak in support of Tom Kirschdorfer. I have worked with him on the OCA Media Board. And I think he does a fantastic job and he'd be a really good choice. His answers, I really liked his answer for the diversity, equity, and inclusion answer too. So I think that's, that's my pick.
Jason?
I also like to speak in favor of Tom Kirschdorfer. He and I worked, him on behalf of the Food Pantry, myself on behalf of People's United Methodist Church of planning and executing the Food Pantry and also helping the board move not only physically, but in terms of practice from the storage shed they were in into the new building. So he understands and has an appreciation for the history, but is able to help groups and committees look into the future and what is needed by the community.
Other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote then. And so as I was saying, it would be a yes and a no, yes and no, and the first person to receive four votes. Simple as that. I'll start with Tom Kirschdorfer.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ebo?
Yes.
Fashion?
Yes.
Canadian?
Yes. And Tom Kirschdorfer, just elected for slot one. Okay. Before we start again, with nomination. Timothy Higgins. Okay.
I'll nominate Lynn McDaniel.
Other nominations?
No, I don't have another nomination. I have commented.
Comment quickly.
So I have to say this is really tough because I would nominate either, both of them and think either of them would be very fine on the board. I particularly appreciated all the things that Tim has done in his public service and with senior care and some of his experience. And I particularly liked the not perfect but accountable. And as a former social studies teacher and someone who has been involved in politics for a super long time and who has a mother who was a teacher, I just feel this affinity with Lynn that says she would do a really good job. And so just need to say that out loud because I'm having a really hard time deciding on this.
I will just add, as we make this decision, as Amanda said, about open means on committees, that that's not, to me, second place here because everybody who has applied, I would feel privileged to work with. And so I do want to put that out there.
Same, same.
Further discussion. Here it is. So we have two nominations, Tim Higgins and Lynn McDaniel.
They'll just, they'll take just three votes for a majority.
First, once we get to three. Okay, so we'll start with Tim Higgins, once we get to three votes. Three, Phil.
Three, Phil. But I think, but I think it'd be appropriate at this time, we've got two people up for consideration.
and if one of the board members wants to make a motion and a second, and then the vote can take place. That way, that way it's unambiguous who can vote at any point.
Okay, so a motion, a second, or one of the candidates.
Or one of the candidates.
Okay, thank you for that. And a second attorney opinion over here.
Second opinion?
Oh, yes.
Never just one person.
Another way to do this is, and this, I like this because no one has to vote against anyone.
Yes.
You can each, in turn, just vote for the individual that you would like to vote for. So you could go each trustee, and you can announce who you would choose to vote for. And that way you don't have to vote no.
I like that much better.
Second opinion.
How did you let me interrupt you? Just hold the trustees, and ask who their election is.
We'll proceed with the roll call, and just go one by one, and just ask them to vote?
Oh, and they choose which.
Which one of.
Okay, you have a cat there?
And if any one person receives majority vote, that person's voted.
So she'll call your name, you will choose your cat, your person, sometime tonight, Caroline? Okay. Well, I don't know. I don't make that rule, but. Okay, so, so we're all clear?
Yep.
Good. And we'll have Candy Cole.
All right, here we go. Ready? Nikki Evans.
Lynette McDaniel.
Peterson.
Lynn McDaniel.
Fashion.
Can I just abstain?
No.
No?
Yes, you can. No, yes, you can.
I can't.
Absolutely, you can abstain.
Because I really can't make a choice. I'm serious.
Nikki.
I vote Lynn McDaniel.
Okay.
Ebo.
Okay, so Lynette McDaniel is for the second board seat. So.
So, Tim, what committee do you want to be on?
So we're all set? Everybody is clear? Okay, thank you all very much for your interest in. Go ahead. Okay. Item nine, new business items for discussion, possible action. A, future agenda items for any board members who may want to ask for future board items. Amanda?
So I would like to see if the board is amenable to talking about the Highlands of Meadow drainage, or not Highlands of Meadow, what is the park? High Meadow Basin, thank you, talking about the mowing there. And the reason I'm bringing this up again, because I know we voted on it, is that the neighborhood feels pretty passionately about this, and they've really tried to find alternate solutions and things that they could do, to the point of looking into getting insurance to be able to mow it themselves. And like, they really, really are trying to work with us to find a solution. So I guess I'm asking the rest of the board to allow us to put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Can I ask, is there, what's the right way to phrase this? What are we putting on the table? Are we putting on the table the entire mowing plan, or that specific area, or what are going to be the parameters of the discussion?
Good question. I would be asking for just that area, that park, that we revisit how frequently the area is mowed. They've shown, you know, the people I've talked to in the neighborhood have said that they're willing to compromise on how often it gets mowed, that they're, they just want to see if there's, you know, if we've really tried everything to be able to find a solution.
Okay. I think we want to leave on our comments, I think Amanda's good, she's done a good job outlining what she wants to do, unless someone.
I was just going to say I support putting it back on the agenda.
Okay. Any objections to put it on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll add that to the agenda. Anyone else? Hearing none, thank you. Item 10, a village administrator report, aren't you headed in your pocket?
Just that baby's due this week, so it's probably the last day to see me for a month. Plan is to be back beginning of July, and most likely the first meeting in the village board.
Congratulations.
Pardon me? Oh. Okay, Timothy, chief of police department.
Yes, I won't take up too much of your time, because my air conditioning's broken the best here. But so, and then for the two new board members, congratulations. I try my best to get monthly activity reports to all of you, just with some highlights of what we're dealing with. Right now we're a little short-staffed, but this is the goal, is every month to get these to you. With several of these, so the one on April 11th, April 13th, and April 22nd, those were incidents that I did, press releases on. Moving forward, when I do a press release to the media, a copy of that also goes to Candy, and Candy then will distribute that to all the board members. So you have that right in the queue, your email. Just to cover them briefly, to catch up, to speed, April 11th, we did have a four-year-old child overdose. Luckily, the child is okay, but we did ultimately arrest the mother for child endangerment charges. On April 13th, we had a bomb threat call to Mid-Central Electric, and we did a protective sweep using the Dane County K-9, can detect bombs, to just be overly cautious and make sure the area was safe. Luckily, no explosive devices were found. The other press release was a traffic stop that was conducted, where ultimately the driver was arrested for eluding two counts of felony bill, accompanying one count of misdemeanor, obstruction, possession of drug paraphernalia. A lot of the reasoning I put press releases out is if it's one of those cases where it really feels disruptive in that community, and people may feel unsafe, we will put out information, just so that they're informed, if anything. Our K-9, so this, we're on our second K-9, his name is Archie, he works with Officer Caraco. They've been doing phenomenal work, and some of their work is noted in here. He's used to track people, and has been used actually several times by other communities. And it works out nice, we have that mutual agreement that if, if another community needs him, we'll send him if he's available, but then also, obviously Archie can't work 24/7, he needs time to relax and play in the backyard. So those other communities are willing to send their K-9s if we need their help in that moment. So it works out very nice. Our calls for service are up in comparison to 2022 in April. I will say they will continue to be what I would say is lower than what I want, and the reason they're lower than what I want is because we just don't have staffing. So two gets sworn in today, now they go through about three months of field training. We have one in the academy, which is four and a half months, then he goes into field training for three months. So we're just trying to do some catch-up. That takes a little bit away from our proactive activity of having people out doing traffic, really addressing some of the complaints, but our staff does a phenomenal job of still trying their best, or picking up overtime to help with some of that. We'll soon be going, well, actually, we're in our OWI grant right now, and then soon going into a Seaford grant, so that helps as well, just to get some more staffing out there and pay for, with less impact on our taxpayers. At the last page of my report is just some meetings I attend to keep all of you on the loop, and then also just some random things that are going on within the police department for the month. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Question, Chris? Thank you. Item 10C, finance director report, summary of building permits, connection fees, feedback fees, collection, and in April 2023, anything to add on this?
I don't have anything to add. If anybody has any questions about it, seems like we're on track to probably do as many building, single-family residential as we do in '22, so it seems to be tracking. A lot of building going on.
Karen?
Yeah.
Amanda?
Oh, yeah. So what I was saying is that as far as building permits, it looks like we're on track to probably do as many single-family residential homes in '23 as what we did in 2022.
Amanda?
I was just going to point out that there's a lot of number div slash zero, like errors in the spreadsheet. I didn't know if you noticed that, whoever puts that together, so it's hard to see then.
Well, the.
It's not a huge deal, the totals are at the bottom, but.
Right, they're just formulas that are in there. If I delete them, then I, you know, we don't have a lot, well, we normally have duplexes, so that one usually isn't like that, so I don't know. I just leave the formulas on that.
Okay. So there should be values in there, or there shouldn't?
No, because the first columns are all zeros.
Oh, okay. So they should just.
There's nothing to divide by.
Gotcha.
It's all zeros.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions?
Thanks. Candy, director of public works report.
Yeah, so we just, coming off the cusp of two really successful volunteer days in planting trees, both at the High Meadows Park area, as well as at the new Gary Dish Park, which is off of Fox Field and Ridgeview Lane up there. Total of 73 trees were planted over these two days. There were 53 volunteers between those two planting days, and over 143 total volunteer hours, which does not include the time my staff spent preparing the areas and all that type of stuff. But really, really neat events organized by Jake Johnson of the Sierra Club. Need to definitely thank him, as well as, I always get this right wrong, but Barnes Inc. for, Jake negotiated some exceptional pricing for these trees. As you'll see in the pictures, I liked, we did get a lot of pictures, which I think is just something neat to see, families, residents, local residents, volunteers coming out to plant these trees. We're in Gary Dish Park, I believe. This is the group, we have Gary and his wife, and his granddaughter, his son, his grandson was out there. This is Jake, who's organizing the, organizing the two events. Just some great pictures, I think, here of Gary. If you ever had a chance to get to know Gary, it's not a memorial park, he's still around, he's still planting, and it was just, it was neat to go out there and talk with him, and kind of wave over the park and say, you know, this is going to be a really neat-looking park, and something he's, he's very proud of. He's, you know, he served 42 years here for the village, and what a neat testimony to that. This is over in Thompson Park, there were trees planted over there, about, I think, 14 or 15 trees. I love the, just the families and everything that came out. Where's this, where's this little guy? This, it was just fun, fun to go out and see, you know, this little guy here. I love, I love that picture. But we had, we had my public works staff, two to three of us out there on each day, help with equipment, watering, transporting wood chips, being able to transport and place the trees near the holes. We dug all the holes. Gary Dish Park is about eight inches of topsoil with about rock everywhere else, and so we had to bust those holes out with hydraulic hammer. But, you know, for as much criticism as sometimes we get in public works, whether it's from mowing, or whether it's from, people feel that something should be managed differently or something like that, it's nice to have these, these wins. And honestly, it's just nice to be planting trees. You know, we took a lot of flack for having what we had to do at J.C. Park, and, but we never hear anything else from all the complainers of, well, you just planted 70 trees. So we hope that the initiative and the funding that we have for this will continue. We still have a lot of funds to plant trees this year. I'll look forward to working with Jake in the fall to hopefully find a couple other parks and locations that we can plant some trees. Also, we had about five extra trees planted. Somehow we ended up with four or five more trees on the trailer than we thought. Don't tell Barnes. No. And we planted those up at the cemetery this last week. So we're really trying to get some more, people, when they go up to the cemetery, they love to be near trees, not the people, well, the families, like their loved ones to be near trees. And so we're trying to get some trees planted up there as well. So just some really neat events, and I just have nothing but praise for my staff, as well as just the residents and volunteers. And some of these volunteers were from out of the, out of the village, with Sierra Club. The what? Yes, that's, oh, hey, you snuck this in. Awesome. Awesome, thank you. So the other thing is, just a notice from Dane County Highway Department. County Highway A, this is marked a little wrong here, but County Highway A here, between Village Oregon and over to Stoughton, going to have some construction projects with some bridge replacements, and box culvert replacements, at which time A will be out of service. So we just like to bring those to people's attention when they happen. Then the last thing I have is just, I do apologize for the temperature in the building today. We are, we are still working on wrapping up construction of two things. One is the HVAC unit, which has been a little bit under dispute with some of our, with our contractor and the design engineer. We were working feverishly to get that resolved. Huh? Feverishly, yes, yes, yes. But this just makes it feel so much nicer when you go outside, and I want to thank the chief for wearing 40 pounds of gear right next to me and muscling through it here. And we did leave a lot of the panels out of the ceiling just to help people feel more at home, to the old, to the old village hall. Kind of gets you there, but we do, the programmer is working this week on programming and getting everything installed. There will be full microphones for everybody. It'll be a system that is through the ceiling, we'll have the camera system and everything, and no wires. So this is all just temporary. We're thrilled to be in here, but I just thank you for your patience as we kind of work out some of the final cakes. The last item, I just want to acknowledge, the front dais desk is handmade locally by The Wood Cycle, out there off of Fish Hatchery Road. The wood that you have there is walnut that is locally sourced. So those are trees that have come down within Dane County for one reason or another, and then dried, kiln-dried, cut, kiln-dried, and then repurposed. So it's kind of a neat story that they have out there, but this was a nice find, and they did a phenomenal job on it and everything. So that's all I have for that.
Amanda?
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
It's so nice. We have space.
You have space, well, it can get a little tighter, because it is supposed to fit 10 up there, yes. Squeeze in. 343 is how it's supposed to lay out there and everything.
Village Hall is beautiful, too.
If it, once it gets cooler, then you'll want to snuggle together, because it'll.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 10E, assistant director of public works report, update on special assessment mailing, addresses, and payback duration of 2023 state, Washington, and Janesville. Lauren?
Thank you. I'm just really pleased, kind of, for the heat tonight, because I really didn't want to follow the trees, which is such an exciting report with special assessments, so this is kind of a nice place for me to be. And I'll hurry along so that we can get to J.C. Park, which is much more exciting than this one. So this is a follow-up agenda item at the request of trustee Ebo and other members of the board, following up on the assessments associated with the state, Washington, and Janesville Street reconstruction project, for the, I guess, information for our new board members as well. board members, as well as for anybody listening. We did, we are levying special assessments for sidewalk installation with the State, Washington, and Janesville Project projects that are ongoing right now. And we sent out preliminary assessments by the end of April. There was some confusion, a resident brought to our attention that some of the mailings that were sent out to affected residents never made it to their addresses. And so, a couple of board members rightfully expressed some concern and asked us to look into it. So, Candy with the clerk's office, and I gave a call into the post office, and expressed that we've noticed some letters that had been addressed to current owner or current resident in the past, not making it where they were supposed to go, either just not arriving at all, or being returned to sender. And we asked if this is something that they were aware of, if this is something that they had received complaints about. They were just as baffled as we were, they expressed that there was no reason that this should be happening. The only reason that they could think of is if the address they were supposed to deliver to was in fact vacant, in that case, it would be returned to sender. A resident could refuse mail, but in that case, they would be required to pay the postage to return it to sender. So, the bottom line is they didn't unfortunately have any easy answers for us here. So, taking all that input into account, we did a couple things to ensure that we got this really important information out to everybody that needed to get it. So, first off, we went through and found every address that was listed under a current owner name and access Dane, and I reached out via email or via phone to each and every one of those, and tried to speak, just talk them through what was going on. I was able to reach quite a few of them, explain what was happening, provided them any information that they needed. Some expressed that they had gotten the letter, some expressed that they hadn't, some expressed that they hadn't checked. And so, they hadn't received it, but they weren't certain it hadn't made it there. We are required to send another letter out as we pass the resolution associated with the special assessments, and so we've developed, we sent that out on Thursday of this past, or of this past week, and we did develop a new mailing list in which we went through, and everywhere the current owner was listed, we replaced it with the name of the person. So, we are hopeful that that will solve the issue. I do want to mention that state statute has built-in insurance against this exact thing, it's why we're required to notice any assessments. We did do that properly, and within the statutory timeframes for the original public hearing, and we've done it again this time, so that did get noticed this last Thursday. So, we are as in compliance as we possibly can be with all of this. We'll continue to try to move forward with this in future projects, so we'll say that this assessment is large by any standard. I came from Madison, as most of you know, and this would be a big project by their standards, so it is not surprising, although it is unfortunate that some of these simply got lost or didn't make it where they were supposed to go. Now that we've covered that, I do want to just touch on a couple of different smaller items. First is that also at the last meeting, board members requested that we extend the maximum payment period for these assessments from three years to five years. We have done that in this final draft of the resolution. I also want to make one point of clarification, Trustee Peterson has reached out to me, and it's a really good question, so I want to make sure it's very clear and on the record. This resolution includes preliminary assessment totals, so that means that they are based on estimates. The final assessment totals will be based on measured quantities, and we've written that a couple times, and as an engineer, it's always made total sense to me. Trustee Peterson explained that it probably doesn't make total sense to somebody that hasn't been doing this over and over and over again. So, what that means is that any assessment that's included in there that does not match what the actual measured totals are at the end, will be adjusted. And that means that if there is no sidewalk replaced, or if there is less sidewalk replaced than we expect at the end of this project, the assessment will be lowered or eliminated entirely. So, we are not going to be charging for sidewalk that we don't put in, as is only right. Furthermore, by law, we have assessment totals included in this resolution that we just passed. We are allowed to go under those totals for each individual property and not pass a new resolution. So we can bill you less, but we cannot bill you more, even if it's by a couple of cents, without passing a new resolution for your property. So, in the event that we underestimated for some of these properties, and we have to go higher based on those field-measured totals, this will be coming back around, and there will be another chance to have this discussion. So I want to make that really, really clear for those that were worried, because that's legitimate concern. That's all I have off the top of my head, although if you guys have any questions, of course, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
Amanda?
And just to clarify, part of the reason this came up is because somebody said to me, hey, my address is on here, but the project doesn't include that address, it looks like it stopped short of it, and, and that was, that was what was confusing to me, that there are addresses on here that may not be assessed at all, because the sidewalk in front of that property may not be dug up in the end. They weren't being overly cautious and including more addresses and properties than the project would touch. So, if your sidewalk isn't touched, you won't be assessed.
And Lauren, I just want to thank you and village staff for making the extra effort to make sure communication happens. I know, we'd always love for it to be perfect, and we're not in control of that, but I thank you and your team for doing everything possible.
Other comments? Thank you, Lauren.
Thanks.
Item, Recreation and Programming Coordinator Report, update on J.C. Park renaming process.
All right, so, just a quick update, since we last brought up the subject in April. At the May ninth park board meeting, we finally put together a short list of some possible new names for J.C. Park. So, we have it narrowed down to Central Park, Generations Park, Oregon Community Park, and then just keeping it as J.C. Park. We also will have an other slot so somebody can write in what they would suggest. We are going to finalize, probably the next park board meeting, a timeline, and then how we're going to get out some sort of electronic survey. It'll be similar to when, you know, Forest Statue was renamed. So we'll get community input and take that into consideration.
Questions? Thank you. Okay. Item G, Village Department Head Staff or Consultant Comments? Hearing none, thank you. Kenny, Village Board Comments?
Any other village board members want to go with me tomorrow to the municipal local government lobby day? I'd be happy to carpool.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can talk about lobbying at a village board. Maybe that's- I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Phil? Jason? I'm not sure if this belongs under Village Board Comments or Announcements, but I just want to remind everybody, June tenth, which is two and a half weeks away, is the Public Art Fair downtown, and along with local artists, there's face painting, food, it should be a fantastic event, and the ad hoc public artists committee's working like crazy to make sure it goes well, so I'd like to thank them for all their work.
Thank you. Amanda?
That just reminded me of something else. The Public Transportation Committee is meeting this Thursday, May twenty-fifth, at six-thirty here in this room, boardroom, new village hall. And it's important because Ben Lyman from the Greater Madison NPO is, is coming to do a presentation. We had a survey that we put out to the community, and he has compiled the results, and he's gonna present those, and the committee will be talking about next steps. So, if you're interested in watching that presentation, come to the meeting.
Carly?
The DE, committee meeting is not on the municipal meetings list. We will be meeting June first, and we'll stay at People's Methodist in the fireside room for now. This is kind of a big space for our committee. And also, we, we really could use three more members on our committee. Right now, we're down, we're, we're down two, and we have a graduating senior who's gonna be leaving, so we would love to have three more members on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Thank you, I would just take, like, take a moment to acknowledge, our administrator, Martin Schenks, has received the credential manager designation from the International City Managers Association. There are about two hundred, two hundred and fifty communities administrators or managers in Wisconsin, but there are only thirty-one credential managers in Wisconsin. Additionally, of the nineteen communities in Dane County, only four others have a credential manager. So, I think we all appreciate Martin, and I suspect this took a lot of time, and we appreciate your, improving your skill levels and experience and things you have to upgrade a little, too. Uh, let's see, item eleven, announcements in miscellaneous business.
Just wanted to mention for the two new board members, Candy will be reaching out to both of you to give you information.
Okay, there was a upcoming, upcoming meetings and events in the packet, any comments or updates on that?
I think it's probably Thursday. I think I just said that earlier.
Okay. Okay, item twelve. Carly and Amanda, how was the paper?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you all very much for, we kind of liked it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
We'll have more work to go.
You're just gonna have to walk this off first.